Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen and councillors. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning Applications Committee. And I just need to read out a brief statement about the about the broadcasting and so that everybody knows that this meeting is being filmed for live and or subsequent broadcast via the council's website. And apparently that's all I need to say, so I hope that's clear to everybody. Thank you very much, and we go on to the agenda. Is everybody happy with the minutes of the last meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. And are there any declarations of interest? Not seeing anybody, so, oh, councillor Ennisson.
Yeah, just on item nine, I am the lead councillor for housing, but I don't feel I'm predetermined, so we'll remain in the chamber.
Okay, thank you. And then there are no questions, and we go on to the report on site visits on page thirteen. Julia, you're going to introduce this.
Yes, thank you Chair. So on your agenda papers at page fifteen, there's three, there's two sites that we've had planning applications in for. Both of these are council-owned sites, council applications coming in, and officers are recommending that you do do a site visit to both of these. So just for the record, the application reference numbers are 230613, and that's an application for Amherst Lane. And the second application is 230612, that's Dwyer Road, another application for redevelopment of that site too. So once officers are aware that an application is nearing coming to Planning Applications Committee, we will write to you to advise when those site visits will take place. Then further down on that list, there's one site that we still need to get an accompanied visit to, and that's for the Central Club, application reference 221364. We're hoping to arrange that for the thirteenth of July, which is the Thursday before the next Planning Applications Committee on the nineteenth of July. Previously, it has been indicated that a preferred time for accompanied site visits is twelve thirty, so members can attempt to do that in their lunch breaks. What we'll be doing when we send that letter out to you, or we'll be seeking confirmation from you all that that time, that scheduling, half lunchtime on a Thursday, is suitable for the majority of you. So I hope that's okay. Thank you. Also, I should say that when we are doing the visit to Central Club, officers will attempt to do a video recording of what we see so that that can be shared with any councillors who cannot attend, so they have the same information as much as they can do as the others who did attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Ennis.
Chair, firstly, coming to see Southcote, which is the finest ward in the land, which I don't think goes without question. I think Amherst Lane's a really good choice to go on a visit. I was just thinking about Dwyer Road, that's, am I correct in saying, that's the one with the fence around it? Isn't it? Would we be allowed to go in and have a look at the field? Although it's really overgrown, isn't it?
Well, have a word with the applicant to just check on the how accessible the site will be, so to make sure that you can get in there and have a look at the the main things that you need to see, which is, I think there is a protected tree on site, there's certainly a significant tree on the site, and also they, there's a terrace of semi-detached houses on one side and the flats on the other side. So I think it's worth going in just to see that context, yeah.
Thank you for that. Anybody else got anything else they wanted to ask for in terms of site visits? No? Okay, thank you very much for that. And then we go on to Planning Appeals, which is on page seventeen.
Sorry Chair, I've got nothing to add to this report.
Thank you, thank you Chair. And yes, I appreciated the officer summation of the inspector's decision to allow 1A Eton Place, which Abbey Ward councillors raised this quite small development out of an abundance of concern for the inadequate size of the, and substandard size of the two proposed units there, the cramped nature of the site in itself, and also stacking, all which are policies that we felt were, are put down for a very good reason, and that is to protect the amenity of occupiers of a site. And unfortunately, the inspector felt that the substandard size and the fact that there was stacking going on, all of which he acknowledged, he felt that it was mitigated by getting two small flats into the town centre. And I do, I do feel for them. I also think that he threw an incredible amount of responsibility back to to us through all of the conditions on this, on, you know, in his decision, including us requiring possibly the necessity to restrict the occupancy of the ground floor flat to a single resident. So it's, it was a little bit upsetting. I'm not, I'm not pleased at that, but we, we did it to make a point. And that point is, is that we, we want quality housing. And, and so on this, on this occasion, he happened to feel that this was going to be mitigated by the two flats that we'll now be getting in the town centre. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? Councillor Lang.
Yes, thank you Chair, just to agree with councillor Rowland, I'd also like to reiterate the point about what she said about protecting the single tenancy through, you know, through conditions. It shouldn't be for the local planning authority to basically, you know, oversee what is a management issue in a tenancy, which should be done for the tenancy. You know, we've had, we've had conditions taken off of applications before to do with curfews and stuff like that on balconies. So we're not here to snoop on people and check on their tenancies. That's down for the landlord and shouldn't be done under condition. Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on this report? In case, can we note it? Thank you. And go on to the final part one report, which is applications for power approval on page twenty five.
Thank you Chair, again, nothing to add to this report.
Anybody want to ask on this report? No, thank you very much. Can we note that then? Thank you. Mr. Wark, which takes us on to the planning applications to be considered this evening. The first one is items seven, and we are unusually doing it all in the correct order tonight because we have public speaking on items seven and eight. So we will be taking item seven first, and that is on page thirty one. So could I get Jonathan Mottell to introduce this? And then I'll call the public speakers after that.
Thank you Chair. Just to know in the first instance, that there's an update report as for the public consultation response being received in the last week. So this item was deferred at the May planning committee, so I'll keep this very brief. An update report has been prepared, which seeks to clarify a number of questions raised by members previously. The overarching conclusion though, to grant the scheme, subject to conditions and a legal agreement, remains unchanged from the, from the main agenda report from the May committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, public speaking, we have first of all objectors Nigel Roberts and Ian Turner. I understand you're both going to come up to the microphone, but one of you is going to take up the five minutes, which we will stay. And then we have the agent, Tim Burden, who will similarly get five minutes. And then after that councillor Mitchell, one of the ward councillors, has asked to speak, and obviously we'll give him that opportunity. So if Mr. Roberts and Mr. Turner would like to come up to the mic and switch it on. Do you want to just say who you are and what your connection is with the site? And then we'll start the five minutes once you've done that. Thank you.
Certainly, my name's Ian Turner. I'm the owner of 219 Henley Road.
I don't think the microphone is quite near enough to you, sorry.
So my name's Ian Turner. I'm the owner of 219 Henley Road. And I'm here to speak on behalf of not only myself, but other members of the neighbourhood that have all been objectors to this planning application. Shall I just carry on Chair? Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this very important subject. I've already told you my name. The long history of this application has meant that planners, councillors and committee, and the way their committees are made up have changed. I hope you've been able to appraise yourselves of both the large quantity of information, as it was commented on at the last meeting, and the high level of scrutiny contained in many objection letters, as they're very much still applicable in our view. A quick point for the planning administration, if I may, and that is that the letter with regard to this meeting has never been received by any of the complainants to date. So it was a byproduct of another discussion that meant we actually knew this meeting was on. With that said, we very much appreciate those councillors that were able to attend the site visit and who now appreciate the real beauty of the site and how it sits in the hillside landscape. From the developers' plans, I have been preparing examples to be presented, showing various relationships of proposed blocks to our houses, also a model that would show 3D effect, because 2D drawings don't truly reflect impact, but unfortunately they can't be presented. So what I'd like to do is ask the committee to consider something, and that is, if you were to walk out of the civic offices across the road with your back to the oracle and look back at your own building, and add fifty percent to the length of the building, that is the impact from my garden, sorry, from my house. If you come back across the road, step onto the terrace, that is the impact from the end of my garden of the block B, which is the main contentious block. So I just ask you to bear that in mind. That whole area, that visible area is wiped away, the green land effect. That is the impression we will have at the back of our properties. It's true that there's a similar overbearing aspect, as provided by block A, which fronts the Henley Road and is actually next to 215 Henley Road. So it's on the side rather than the rear. So just please ask to bear those in mind. Our main areas of objection were also raised by yourselves at the previous meeting and with the reasons for the deferral. These five, four or five reasons for deferral, I would contest have not been resolved, but simply responded to in the additional data. So to tell them one by one, the main major, one of the major ones was the impact on environment. Well, with these buildings, obviously our green environment will be lost forever. The trees, the arborist report does not really address replacement of canopy, which is our concern, not just for animals and the green look, but also to do with carbon footprint, et cetera. It's physically not possible, although the number of trees has been upped, it's physically not possible with these proposed blocks to actually replace the canopy cover of the current situation. Again, impact on environment, we have beautiful wildlife space. Regularly in our gardens, we have fallow deer, roe deer and mung jack. We have foxes, bats and badgers. We have herons, we have two species of woodpecker, along with nuthatch and cuckoo, all normal species of finches and bluetits, et cetera. It's also true at the end of the gardens, all normal associated insects and reptiles. There is, there are no exceptions. A second and another major concern, which was again raised by councillor last meeting, is the fact that we're prepared, or the proposal is, that we would defer decision or design of a flood and drainage solution until after permission's granted. This, I just cannot get my head around. And particularly in light of-
Sorry, can I just tell you, you've only just got a minute or so left, so.
Okay. So we've got a Reading and Cavisham flood alleviation scheme was scrapped in July 2022. We've had drainage sewage issues with the existing development of the signature home coming up in the nursery gardens because the works weren't satisfactory. This is going to add another fifty-five, sorry, fifty-nine properties. Suitability, and I'm going to praise you now because I've obviously gone a bit fast. The suitability of the second block particularly with regard to the very steep exit and access to the site with sixty-five-year-old plus people, the considerations around cycles and walking for these people to actually use the buses, it doesn't hang together. These people, for the, because of the cost that these properties are going to sell for, arguably, these people are going to be owners of cars. These are not going to drive, sorry, not going to walk in and out of this site, as I believe one of the councillors mentioned last time. It is very steep, and the concept of walking through another block that's not yours to just walk up to the Henley Road, again, many steps.
Can I just say your time is up, but if you want, we do ask questions of people, so I'm sure people will ask you questions that allow you to make some points you maybe haven't had time to do in the five minutes. So I'm sorry to cut you short, but we do need to stick, stick to this to be fair to everyone. So if you would like to stay there, we'll see if there's any questions from members of the committee. So councillor Lang, are you indicating? No, sorry, oh, it's councillor Gavin, beg your pardon. Thank you, and thank you for coming in to to explain your position. Can I just clarify, your, your 219?
Yes.
So from the plan we have, the bottom half or bottom two-thirds of your garden, of the original garden of the house, I should say, rather than your garden, what, it forms part of the development site, is that right? So was, was that, did you sell that off or did?
I did, yes.
So, I mean, I know, did you not think that there might be a development on it?
Though the whole concept was a development, but it was a small residential development that we agreed to.
Right, okay.
Nine houses.
Okay.
Not fifty-nine units in two massive blocks.
Okay.
Space between them, it's a completely different development.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Councillor Lang.
Buttons, thank you Chair. Thank you, Mr. Turner, for coming in, and I recognise Mr. Roberts over there. Old high-down boy, but no favour to them tonight, so. Anyway, it's just to clarify, in six point three five, it says it's a publicly accessible nature garden to the rear of 219. Yeah?
Yes, sorry, I'm familiar with the, the latest identification of the plan shows that that's actually been halved because they're putting an adopted road across.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, councillor Rowland, and then.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for coming in this evening. Could you describe to me any, any flooding drainage situations and what your concerns are about this? Because the proposal in the, in the report that we're asked to consider this evening talks about the fact that there were a couple of different approaches that the applicant could take to mitigate that, and as to whether they would have that pre commencement or or post occupation. And could you, as a person that's lived in the area, describe any situations or your understanding just of the natural lay of the land in that area, if you could?
Okay, so my experience is that in the time I've owned the property, I've had one flooded area. But the concern is that the number of units that we're putting extra work into those, let me call them sewers, drains, whatever we want to call it, it would have a natural effect. We talk about runoff, and we're putting a huge concrete block in the way. We are justifying or building that block on top of backfield land. So I don't, and sorry, the first report done by the Environment Agency suggested that it was never built on. All the time I've owned the property and talked in forty years, that the bottom sixty-six, sixty-seven feet of that property, all those properties along there, should never be built on. And the Environment Agency report, with the first times with this planning application, said it shouldn't be. And subsequently, it's evolved that they have a slightly different opinion now. I don't know what caused that to change. I'm no expert on fluvial runoff, et cetera, but I can't understand how we can have, go forward with an approval when we don't know the story, when we've already got problems before this block is built.
Councillor Robbins, you're indicating.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Nigel Roberts for coming in and speaking this evening. You mentioned, I think, the impact of, you know, the view from, from your garden. Would you also say that potentially there was a major privacy issue in terms of the size of the building and obviously window spacing straight upon to your garden?
Absolutely, and that is the key concern. So the building itself wipes out the natural greenery and the animals. The building itself is overbearing on all of the properties that it backs onto. And indeed, the top two floors would be laterally opposite my bedroom windows. And the same is true of the properties to my right and left. So there is a, remembering that the gardens drop away from the houses on the Henley Road, so there's total visibility into all those gardens.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, and I echo everyone else saying, thanks for coming in and engaging. It's just to, just to clarify something that councillor Gavin raised. It's quite, it's a, it's a, it's a normal practice, I think, for developers to, to enter into an option agreement with a, with a resident. And the option agreement would say, if this planning application, this specific planning application goes through, can I can buy your property? Yeah?
Yes.
Not can I put any planning application through and buy your property? So.
The option agreement is resolved as soon as they execute on a planning application and they pay me.
On any planning application?
That until they get an application passed and execute the agreement, they can submit more than one. But as soon as they get permission and execute the agreement, which they did on the nine houses, end of.
So the, the option agreement still, despite them submitting a different planning application from what you saw and you agreed to when you entered into the option agreement?
Yeah.
That they, they can still hold you to that option agreement even with a different planning application?
The option agreement is done and dusted. That was signed. They got planning, they bought my land, and they've now gone ahead with two or three iterations of other proposals. So I would, I would agree, I would ask, when is a contract a contract?
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't seem to make total sense to me. But I'm sure, I'm sure you know better, so thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else wanting to ask you questions, but thank you very much for your time. And if you want to retake your seat in the public area, we'll get Mr. Burden from, as the agent, to come forward. Thank you. Good evening, and if you'd just like to tell us who you are and what your involvement is with this, and then we'll start timing your five minutes after that. Thank you.
Of course, thank you Chair. My name's Tim Burden, I'm a planning director at Turley. We're a national planning consultancy, and I'm based in the Reading office.
I think your mic's a bit too far away.
Too far away, apologies, I'll try again. Is that better? So I'll repeat myself, Tim Burden, planning director at Turley. We're a national planning consultancy. Thank you. Chair, members, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Firstly, I'd like to thank your officers for bringing this proposal to committee again with a recommendation for approval, following its robust consideration throughout the application process. In response to comments made at the last committee, I can confirm that I was actually in attendance. However, due to the adopted council policy, I was unable to speak at that time as no one had registered to speak against the item. However, it was useful to understand members' concerns, which has enabled us to work further with your officers. And as such, you have before you a very detailed update report from Mr. Markwell that I hope now fully addresses all of the matters that you raised. We'd however like to focus on a few specific issues raised at that last meeting. Firstly, we recognise that this is a somewhat unusual site, not least given the existence of the adjoining signature care home that's recently been completed next door. This has necessarily influenced our proposals, and we sought to respond positively to it, while also reflecting the wider character and appearance of the area and recognising the transitional nature of this site. As we've heard, the principle of the redevelopment of this site has of course already been established through the 2020 permission. Its redevelopment is therefore inevitable. Consequently, the design of the scheme seeks to address competing requirements. These include matters such as trees, ecology, parking, drainage, et cetera, and to ensure that a high-quality proposal is delivered. Indeed, since the submission of the application in May last year, we've worked collaboratively with the case officer to find the right solutions for this site, and therefore the scheme has been amended a number of times. Our clients are sought to ensure efficient use of the site whilst meeting an identified and growing, growing need within Reading for the provision of bespoke older person's accommodation. Like your officers, we believe an appropriate balance is now being achieved. Consequently, there are now outstanding objections for the council's internal consultees or any external statutory bodies. Terms of specific comments made at the last meeting, we acknowledge that although a number of garden trees will be removed, a significant number of existing trees in the southern part of the site will be retained and protected during the construction period. The forty-seven trees proposed to be removed are of low quality. The proposals will plant ninety new trees on the site, giving an overall net gain of forty-three, which is expected to achieve a gain in canopy cover overall. In terms of flooding and the impact on Barry Brook, the locally flood authority has reiterated that the proposed drainage scheme is acceptable. Similarly, the Environment Agency and Thames Water raise no objections. These are all subject to planning conditions as set out in the report. The rector relocation strategy has been subject to various revisions, and the council's ecologist is satisfied with the proposed strategy. I can also confirm that four units of the upper ground floor of block A will be wheelchair user units in accordance with your policy requirements. Further, since the application was submitted, building regulations have changed, and we propose that all car parking spaces will have electric vehicle charging points provided. Finally, we're all too aware of the affordable housing priorities and pressures in Reading, but I'm also mindful of the contribution that the scheme will make to another important sector of the community, as older person's accommodation. The council's policies do allow viability to be considered and assessed through the application stage, as it has here. Financial contribution has been agreed and a review mechanism. This late review mechanism has been agreed such that any valuation uncertainty regarding sales values or bill costs will be resolved by the applicant, admitting actual achieved sales information and invoices for bill costs at seventy-five percent completion of the development. Therefore, if either sales have been underestimated or costs overestimated and the surplus is then generated at a later date, a further contribution will be made up to the full policy compliant amount. In summary, your officers have recommended the proposals for approval. There'd be no material harm in terms of privacy and amenity. The proposals will integrate within this transitional site, and all council policy and other standards have been met to the satisfaction of consultees. Accordingly, we will recommend, we'd ask members to approve the application in accordance with your officers' recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you'd like to stay there for a while, see if there's any questions from members. Councillor Gavin. Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were indicating, apologies. Councillor Hornsby Sweth.
Hello, good evening, thank you for coming in. I very much welcome the clarification that you've given on electric vehicle, electric vehicle charging points. That's very helpful, and I welcome that it's compliant with the new building regulations. So thank you for that. That was my original sort of area of concern. My question now is actually about the number of disabled bays.
Okay.
Originally, if you, if you attended last, last month's meeting, I understood that there were six of them, and now I understand that, and that was my concern, that the six EV charging points are all in disabled bays. I now understand that there are only three disabled bays for the forty-six car parking spaces. So my question, I've got a couple of- So my question, I've got a couple of questions. When you did the TRICS analysis to determine the required amount of a number of parking bays, did you also calculate in that analysis the number of disabled bays required? That's my first question. Now, I see that the three bays that you've supplied complies with the supplementary planning guidance for general developments. However, the same supplementary planning guidance also sets out that for retirement villages, parking requirements will be determined separately. Now, I just wanted to ask you, would you be prepared to be flexible on the numbers of disabled bays if in fact, having had another double check, you weren't just going on the general standards of properties in zone three of parking, parking regulations and standards? But whether in your particular development for the over sixty fives, whether three was sufficient and whether, if in finalising the parking thing in accordance with condition five, you might be prepared to be flexible on that?
Okay, thank you for that. That picks up what I heard at the last meeting. I think there's a couple of interrelated points there. I think firstly, in terms of your policy, I think I'm correct in saying that.
I think we're still having a bit of.
Sorry, am I a little bit sorry? Try and get it too close to myself, but hopefully that's better. I think the policy states five percent of total number to be provided, so we were above that, and that's obviously the starting point. We've then tried to balance it in terms of the total number of spaces on the site. I think we are slightly below the maximum standards. And they are, of course, maximum standards in your SPD. That was based on a TRICS analysis of, I think it was nine other similar sites that the transport consultant went around. And that obviously helped get the overall number of spaces. I think, being quite open with you, I think that five percent has just derived from that approach, rather than actually picking up any real issues on any of those other sites in terms of disabled bays. I would imagine it's something we could look into. I'm just mindful that there's obviously competing pressures on land take between disabled bays and normal bays, so it's getting that balance between the two, which I think is what we felt was appropriate, what the highways authority thought was appropriate. But I'm sure with Mr Markwell and myself could maybe think of a planning condition that could deal with that in terms of an updated car parking layout. But that I would imagine would necessitate an overall lower number of spaces.
Can I just welcome that, Chair? I think that's very helpful. Thank you very much.
The Rowlands to ask her question next.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight and presenting your and actually coming back to us with a lot of the questions and concerns that we had. I do appreciate the fact that you clearly, well, you were apparently in the room. And so you understood a lot of the concerns that I brought forward myself and actually took great care to ensure that they were answered, I believe, in the report. However, and I do appreciate a lot of those, and I take a lot of those points on board. What I would like to understand is, is a really more basic and fundamental question in the layout of the entire site, given the amount of canopy cover and the the large groves of trees and everything there. What was your rationale for the placement of the building to largely cut out perhaps a lot of those, a lot of those trees? How you did and how you laid it out on the site and why perhaps you weren't able to work in? What I might feel would be a little more of a work within the environment as opposed to choosing to actually remove so many and then put so many back in. So just your rationale about the layout of the property, if you might.
Yeah, I'm doing my best. I can probably spend a couple of hours talking you through this, but when you approach a site like this, we undertake an opportunity and constraints assessment and things like the tree surveys, the ecology work will feed into that in terms of understanding the specifics of the site. As has been touched on and was at the last meeting, there are a significant number of low grade trees, so category U mainly, but also a couple of clumps of what are called category B trees. Most of those are historical garden trees. I know Mrs Hanson's been on site a number of times, looked at those. She's happy with the the tree survey and the conclusions of that. So that fed into the process in terms of what trees should be retained, stroke, could be retained. Alongside that, it's obviously, and Mr Markwell sets it out, I think, very fairly in his report, we have to look at all the other requirements from the parking we've just touched on, to the flood drainage requirements, to the access road. And in terms of the layout, this scheme, as I said, has been in for over a year now, I think I'm correct in saying, and has probably had about seven or eight different iterations where we have tried very hard to green up the site as much as possible. So we've had long discussions about street trees and on the front of John Henley Road, which I know is something important. And in terms of the rear of the site as well, making sure we have a good viable amenity space. And obviously considerations around drainage and the impact of that as well. So we, we feel that that balance has been achieved. Planning by its very nature is a matter of balance in harm versus benefits. Your officers and the consultees feel that as well. There are no significant trees that will be lost through this proposal. I think that's quite important, whereas there is a significant net gain of appropriate species that will be secured by the planning conditions proposed by officers that will ensure a really high quality replacement of that canopy cover.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming in this evening and responding to the committee's concerns of the last meeting. I just wanted to pick up on the questions that have been raised about the trees and the canopy cover. So you've stated that there will be a net gain, but presumably you'll be planting saplings on the site. So it's presumably going to take decades to replace the canopy cover that currently exists. And we've heard from the residents about the variety of animals beyond the reptiles, which councillor Rowland spoke about the plight of the last meeting. Heard that there's also foxes, badgers, herons, other birds, deer, now which are going to lose their ecosystem as a result of this replanting.
So in terms of the trees to be planted, we have submitted an indicative landscape scheme. The council's tree officers come back with comments on that in terms of the species. They won't all be saplings. That there are, you know, this is going to be a new amenity area, obviously approved for this, for future residents. So the idea is a very high quality amenity area with planting that comes with that. So certainly on schemes we've done elsewhere, it's not a case of just replacing with the lowest common denominator, as it were, and this will be a high quality space for future residents. And yes, I think we're openly acknowledging that there will be some displacement of ecology. I think, again, the planning system has to grapple with that. We've gone through a very extensive process in terms of protected species, mitigation and approach, and that has all been agreed with the council's ecologist.
councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to raise the question, which has already been raised this evening, over the suitability of the site. You know, given that the anticipated audience are over a certain age, you know, the road from Henley Road down to the level where block B will be is exceptionally steep. You know, you've mentioned mitigation in terms of being able to provide access to Henley Road via the lift in block A. However, it's already been mentioned that there will be drivers in block B. Now, given what weather conditions we have in the winter, I mean, I've spoken to residents down there who are effectively trapped in their homes because they can't drive up, you know, the steep incline to get out and onto the road. So just wanted to understand your thoughts as to, you know, has proper thinking gone into the potential, you know, owners of these properties?
Yes, very much so. And there's operators who are looking at purchasing this site, who operate similar facilities across the country, have no issues at all with that. And I think there's, you know, particularly in terms of this site, we have a freshly built care home next door. And I believe not all the residents there are bedridden, for want of a better description. There are active members of that community as well. So that access road was obviously approved under that consent, the principle of care in the purer sense, a C two use class, it's a lot more involved element of care for more vulnerable members of the community has been accepted on the site next door. The scheme would comply with all the DDA requirements. We don't see an issue with it. Yes, we recognise the challenges in terms of topography, but that's why we have things like the lift in there, so people can get up to the street level.
Not seeing anybody else. So thank you very much for answering the questions.
Thank you for your time.
And I've also got councillor Mitchell, who's one of the ward councillors, or third ward councillor, we have two of them here tonight, but who is asked to speak to the committee. So councillor Mitchell. And unlike the public, he can speak for as long as he likes, but I hope he will be to the point and succinct.
I will do my best, Chair. Thank you very much indeed. Yes, thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to address committee. As the Chair has just noted, as the only ward councillor for Emma Green, who isn't a member of the committee, I'm here to support fully the objections of those residents who live directly next door to this proposed development on Henley Road. As you've just heard so eloquently from Mr Turner as the last but one speaker, it is entirely inappropriate in its scale, inappropriate in its impact on the residents directly living beside it, unnecessary in its location, given the fact that a similar, very similar care home for older residents has already just been built, literally next door to it. And most importantly, as you've heard, it's entirely inappropriate, given the highly detrimental effect it will have on the local environment, not least the loss of a hugely valuable mature tree canopy with the consequent impact on Reading's longstanding aim of achieving net carbon reduction during a declared climate emergency. I'm therefore urging members who, having already deferred the decision to this evening, and especially those who may still harbour doubts about the proposal, to continue to err on the side of caution by voting for refusal tonight. Whilst fully accepting the need for more housing in Reading, especially affordable homes for our older residents, even though no affordable units are proposed in these plans, and allowing for the fact that loss of view is not a material consideration for committee. The point that still needs to be emphasised is that this particular proposal is not only overbearing, overlooking and intrusive for its neighbours due to its block design, particularly the height of its eastern elevation. It will bring about, as I say, an unacceptable overall loss of environmental benefit. It will also cause further construction traffic disruption on Henley Road as a major route into Reading from the east, and nor does it have community support. There are important questions too, over the legal status of the development of the five existing properties that would have to be demolished to make way for it, given that they still appear subject to restrictive covenants, some apparently dating back to nineteen twenty three, which don't appear to have been altered since. Firstly, on the loss of tree canopy, that this proposal, if approved, will result in a net loss, as you've heard, of forty seven trees. A point even officers in the report before you accept will be, and I quote, "a regrettable and harmful impact of the proposed development." Officers also accept the canopy cover provided by the existing trees is considerable and that the ninety new trees that are being offered are still too limited, both in variety and insufficiently diverse in species. Residents and I fail to see how the proposed net gain of forty three mostly younger trees can in any way be a comparable replacement of canopy, let alone a net gain, if the area's present capacity to reduce greenhouse gases is to be maintained. Surely the developers should have come forward with plans that avoid this by seeking to build around the existing mature landscape and certainly not by denuding a beautiful biodiverse area of natural growth and a vibrant wildlife habitat, as we've heard to the extent that's being proposed. The neighbouring residents also fear being substantially overlooked, as I say, by the eastern side of the development, especially when the plans are to raise the start point of the build by backfilling the existing steeply sloped ground level, causing, they say, the visual effect of the block from their homes being closer to five storeys high than four. With regard to the concerns over the water supply and fears of future flooding, Thames Water has made it clear that significant network reinforcement work will be needed to ensure sufficient capacity is in place before any occupation can occur. Neighbours remain worried that the extra demand that further new homes on the site will only add to the network pressure that the new care home next door has already created. And nor are residents reassured by the report's claims that Barry Brook will not see flooding from increased drainage in future. To return very briefly, Chair, to the question of restricted covenants on the houses to be demolished. Having seen a land registry extract of the title to number two hundred and seven, one of those to be pulled down, it states categorically that the owner is not to erect or permit to be erected any dwelling house or principal building, the front of which will be less than twenty feet or more than fifty feet from the Henley Road. It goes on, "No houses other than detached or semi-detached houses shall be erected on the said land, nor more than four houses thereon. Nowhere does it allow for large overbearing blocks to be constructed on the site. And nor have I even mentioned the low level of profitability currently being forecast for the development or the previous inaccuracies over the location, as councillor Hornsby Smith was highlighting, of EV charging points and the number of disabled parking bays being offered, which is just three, not six. In closing, for a ward whose residents more widely are about to lose substantial and precious green space with the imminent construction of two hundred plus homes on the former site of Reading Golf Club to the north, along with the disruption of construction traffic likely around both that development and that of Caversham Park, this proposal, albeit smaller, represents yet another significant encroachment on Reading's invaluable green space, this time at the southern end of the ward. It's therefore, in my view, simply the wrong scale of development in the wrong place. And the developers should think again, considering perhaps a more appropriate brownfield site. So I'm urging colleagues on committee this evening to refuse the current proposal in its entirety this evening for the sake of the people of Emma Green. Thank you.
Could I just ask our legal advisor to make it very clear to people that the whole issue of covenants and any legal agreement that residents may have had is not a planning issue that we can take into account?
Yes, Chair, just to confirm, restrictive covenants are private property matter and not a material planning consideration for members tonight. And also reference was previously made to option agreements, and the same applies for that as well.
Right, I'm going to, we don't get to question councillor Mitchell. So it's not the same as public speaking. So can I see who'd like to speak or ask questions or make comments on this? Councillor Emberson.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask a question of the officer? We've heard about overbearing and privacy, and I've read your report, but it would just be helpful to get your comment on that fresh, if you don't mind. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, obviously, within the main reports in terms of, I think it's session six point four, that obviously talks about kind of the various factors of amenity that we take into account. Probably the most pertinent one is in terms of the twenty metre window to window distance. And in terms of block B in the southern part of the site. So you can see on the plan there, the distance between block B and the rear windows of the existing properties which will remain on Henley Road is far in excess of that twenty metres. And also, just in terms of kind of block A, which is front onto Henley Road, there have been various features incorporated on that boundary with number two on five to reduce and mitigate any amenity impact in terms of no kind of windows on that boundary. The actual scale of the building has been reduced quite considerably, so it's more kind of akin to the existing property at that point. So, yeah, we're within section six point four of the main report. That goes into detail as to kind of the. into detail as to kind of the acceptability of the proposals from an amenity perspective.
Councillor Rowland?
Thank you. Could I just get some clarity on the Thames Water situation? And just if you could clarify me the reasons why we're going for a preoccupation as opposed to a pre-commencement, just for my own clarity. Thank you.
Thanks. So that point is covered within the update report, and it is, let me just see, I think it's, point, yeah, point nine, so 2.9. So that details the intended condition for, and then paragraph 2.92 and 2.93 go into detail. In terms of the specific point about the trigger point for the condition and the timing of it, as 2.93 states, government advises that we should look to minimise where possible kind of pre-commencement conditions. Thames Water themselves recommended for this condition to be preoccupation. And the update report essentially agrees that it can be preoccupation. But there is a kind of acknowledgement that to actually reach that point, the applicant will have needed to go through a process far in advance to have their kind of X in a row, ducks in order, to actually enable that. I think officers are content that it wouldn't necessarily pass all of the tests of condition for it to be pre-commencement, and therefore we're satisfied that it could be preoccupation.
Thank you for that clarity.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. I have, still have very strong reservations over this application. You know, I find it not a suitable place. I appreciate that we've got the signature care home just a few doors away. However, you know, adding another care home, it's going to be a situation whereby Henley Road will become the Eastbourne of Reading, for want of a better description. It's not a suitable location, I believe. I'm also concerned about the loss of, you know, the green space at the back, and also the privacy factor. I note in the officer's report that privacy was mentioned, but a lot of focus given to the property right next to Block A, which obviously had no windows overlooking this property. But very little is mentioned about the, you know, the gardens of 219 and then 221 all the way down. So, you know, we've been to have a look at what the possible impact was, and, you know, there is a clear case for a lack of privacy caused by Block B in terms of where it is proposed to go. So I will not be voting in favour of this particular application, and we'll vote for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, can I just come in, just with a couple of kind of fact checks on there, just in terms of the signature care home is immediately next door to the application sites. That's probably also pertinent that the proposal is kind of retirement-aged accommodation, so it's within C3 use class rather than a care home, which is C2. Also, in terms of the impact on kind of the neighbouring properties, 215, 217, 219, I'll probably refer you to paragraph 6.4.3 of the main reports. I'll just read out just one sentence, just in terms of the impact on Block B overlooking the rear of properties at number 215 and onwards to the east. Back-to-back distances between buildings are 44 metres to 215, 43 metres to 217, and almost 57 metres to 219. These are comfortably in excess of the 20-metre back-to-back distance referenced in policy CC8.
Thank you. Councillor Williams?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a couple of things from me. I am sympathetic, very sympathetic with the colleague to my left here, oh, I should have been on the right one, the colleague to my left, who is suggesting that he doesn't like this to the extent that we should refuse. I'm not quite sure I'm there with him yet, but I wanted to say a couple of things. I think councillor Mitchell and councillor Rowland, I hope I'm not putting words in their mouth, both suggested that we want to see developments built around and with the landscape, not sort of inserted into it with no due care and attention. And I'm not convinced that this is the best design that could sit on that particular piece of land. Whether that's enough to refuse it, though, I'm also not convinced. I'm also disappointed, maybe that something hasn't been mentioned yet, which is the removal of the five family homes. The demolition of those buildings and the loss of the energy there, the material, the carbon that went into those buildings in the first place. So we lose when we demolish, and that is a disappointing factor. We will gain with the buildings, but we'll never get that carbon back from that demolition. So I am very sympathetic, and I can understand how other members might wish to refuse this. But I'd be keen to hear what other people think, because I don't feel on balance that I'm ready to vote for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Emberson.
Thank you, Chair. I too am sympathetic to the objectors and the local ward councillors, but for me, there's no basis for refusal. I think the report is very thorough. And whilst I appreciate the commentary we've had about the legal arrangements, that's not pertinent to the planning committee this evening. And there's no material basis to refuse this, and councillor Robinson did not provide one, albeit he mentioned privacy. I've never seen a report that refers to every neighbour's garden from their point of view, and I'm satisfied from what the officer said this evening. So for me, I will be voting in favour of this this evening, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Hornsby Smith?
Thank you, Chair. This is a question to the officer. Given that the applicant, when we were discussing it earlier, has agreed that in determining the number of disabled bays, as in the pre-application discussions, there was only reference to general parking standards covered by the SPG. And that in this case, there was no specific assessment made of the requirements and needs of a retirement village. And given that the applicant has undertaken that that work will now be done, will he agree to work with the applicant to reassess, in the light of that, whether any further disabled bays are needed as part of the overall allocation?
Okay, thanks for the question. Fortunately, I've got my transport colleague Darren Cook, who should be with us online, who should be able to kind of go into detail for you on that.
Darren, I don't know if you're muted or, so it's just not linking up properly by the look of it. Simon is going to try and sort it, but. Chair, maybe say something. Can I say something while waiting? Julie's going to say something, I think, as we can't see.
I'm not going to sing a song while we're waiting. What I was going to suggest is that one of the recommended conditions is that it's preoccupation, it's condition 11 on page 135 of your pack, preoccupation submission and approval of the EV charging point scheme details. Because it's preoccupation, that does give the applicant the opportunity to work with our transport colleagues. Also, on the basis of the, by then they will know who the occupants will be, to come up with the right plan that would suit the needs of their intended occupiers, and also meet the requirements of our policies. So that may be, so I think what we will be saying is that we will be continuing working with the applicant to make sure that that EV charging point scheme is acceptable for the scheme.
Yes, it's, Chair, if I may, the point that I was making was not about the number of EV charging points. That's been clarified by the speaker, and it's been improved massively. Now, the point is really, it's about the mix of disabled bays and standard bays. That was the point I was getting at. And as the applicant explained, that hadn't gone through the TRICS analysis. So the number of three was purely the general policy compliance with the SPG. So I wanted to know, given that the SPG also specifies that where you've got a retirement village, that the requirement for disabled bays will be assessed independently of that, and the applicant has agreed to that, I just want the council to say, yes, we will work with the applicant on that.
I think the point is, though, do we need to add anything to any of the conditions?
Yeah, I think it would be condition five rather than 11. And yeah, I think, as indicated kind of elsewhere, I think my transport colleague, his viewpoint, although he's been a little bit muted, is that there may be potential to work with the layout to increase the number of disabled bays, albeit it would be over and above what the policy requirement is. There may be some kind of compromises to be had in terms of how that weighs up with the wider layout, which I think the agent referenced in that discussion. But I certainly think that within condition five, we can revisit that issue to seek to increase it as desired.
Okay, so make sure there's an appropriate minute on that, please. Anybody else? Yeah, councillor Davis.
Just briefly, I think we've talked quite a lot appropriately about the negative impacts. And councillor Williams was, I think he was referring to balance, and whether he'd been tipped about, has been tipped for him. I think we ought to just remember in the back of our minds that the benefits of this, which we haven't discussed, which is that, you know, we have 59 units, a lot more than, is it 59 units? A lot more. Those people will have the opportunity to live in Reading in specialist accommodation for over 55 retirement people, freeing up their, potentially freeing up their homes existing, potentially displacing development that could be more harmful, and building on gardens. This is not greenfield, this is gardens that is inaccessible to anyone other than the owner of the garden. And so impact on landscape, really impact on somebody's private garden that you're talking about. So I think we've got to keep in our mind that, you know, weighing up all these dis-benefits that we've talked about and considerations, that we've heard mitigation of, we've got to remember that overall, the benefit of providing this additional housing in a more dense form on what is actually brownfield, produces, it's got to be weighed up and weighs very heavily for me on the side of allowing this.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else was indicating?
So I just clarify, it's 55 units. It was 59 at the outset, and it's been revised in the course of the application to 55.
Councillor Lang?
Yeah, I agree with councillor, councillor, officer Mark Wells on it tonight for his details. I agree with councillor Davis again, you know, I want to speak positively about this. Obviously, I'll take on concerns of the residents and the issues they've raised. But, you know, the conclusion 7.3, page 184, you know, I think sums it up perfectly. Overall, I'm positive about this development, what it can bring to the area. Local people, a lot of older people, don't use that term, but move into the area, freeing up houses, which increases the supply as well. I am slightly uncomfortable with some of the comments that have been creeping through tonight. You know, I see it a lot, in particular on social media and in the newspapers, a creeping ageism about how we talk about things, you know, what are we going to say, like years ago, older people couldn't live on Donkin Hill, or couldn't live on Surly Road because they couldn't get up the hill, or, you know, where are we going with this? Just put a grit box up there, if they want to drive, they want to drive, they might want to walk over to the travellers' rest or something and have a beer. I just think the positives for the local area, the extra money they're bringing, you know, the extra voters adding to the democratic sort of like mandate for sitting councillors and suchlike, you know. So I do take on board residents' concerns, but like I always say, it's about balance and benefit to the wider community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair. I very much, I guess, yes, considered councillor Williams' thoughts to be quite logical, too. There is, this is ultimately, and I know he's still hedging his bets back there and all of that, but there is a lot to commend the application for, and both councillor Davis and councillor Lang spoke very, very well on that point. I'd like to come back just quickly about the environment that I, if I could, because that was one of my biggest concerns at the last meeting. And whilst there may be this kind of issue, that kind of issue and everything, I feel, and I feel like I do need to say it, that the answers were provided to me that I'm satisfied with. The situation in dealing with the potential flooding situations have been addressed by professionals that certainly know more than me. And while I don't believe that the canopy cover will be what it is now, I do believe that there is the scope for good canopy cover with a good base of trees and landscaping. And so in that matter, I am happy, and I do not see any other reasons why there could be a refusal of scheme. And as a matter of fact, I think that we need to look to this change that I am going to vote in favour of as something that will ultimately be to our benefit. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else. So unless officers have got anything else they need to add, we'll move to a vote. Can I see all those in favour of the officer recommendation to grant this? Thank you. And those against? Okay, thank you very much. Or is anybody abstaining? Should ask that as well? No? Okay, so that is carried. Thank you very much. It's been a long discussion, but it's a very important site, and a lot of issues were needing to be discussed. So thank you very much. Shall we move on then to the next item, which is also public speaking, which is item eight on page 195. And it's the South Street, Trinity Hall South Street report, which, Anthony Humphries, hopefully we can get Anthony in on the, is it not working? In which case, we're going to have to ask. Sorry, Anthony. So I think Steve Viger is going to introduce this because of this technical breakdown. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. This is an application at Trinity Hall, located on the corner of South Street and Sidmouth Street, and involves a proposed replacement.
Chair, could I ask the officer to just get his microphone a little closer for the deaf ones here?
No, it's my tendency to mumble. Apologies. Thank you, Chair. There's an application at Trinity Hall, which is located at the corner of South Street and Sidmouth Street. It's proposed to replace the existing building, a part four, part five storey building consisting of 22 residential flats. The application is recommended for refusal. Whilst the loss of Trinity Hall itself is considered acceptable, the proposed replacement building would result in harm to the setting of nearby listed buildings, harm to the character of the area, and harm to neighbouring amenity. The quality of accommodation for future occupiers is considered to be poor, and insufficient soft landscaping is proposed. The scheme proposes 100% affordable housing within the scheme. However, as However, as detailed in the report, this is not considered to outweigh the numerous harms identified. Furthermore, the mix of dwelling sizes has not been suitably justified. Officers do not disagree that these sites should be redeveloped. However, it is clear that any proposal for redevelopment should be carefully considered in its design. Importantly, and as noted in the main agenda report, the planning authority has a statutory obligation to have special regard to the desirability of preserving the setting of listed buildings, of which several are located around the site and the sites located within the setting of. The applicant was given the opportunity to submit revised plans, showing a reduction in the footprint and the height and a more suitable design, including more sensitive transition to the listed terrace adjacent. A reduction in the amount of development proposed would have also allowed for more better quality space around the building, which in turn would have improved the quality of the accommodation for residents. Whilst revised plans were submitted, these did not overcome the concerns raised and the reasons for refusal reflected in, this reflects in the reasons for refusal, which largely flow from the overdeveloped nature of the proposal. So as we say, the application is recommended for refusal, as set out in the main agenda. And there's an update report on page seven of your update pack. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And we have public speaking, as I said at the beginning, and we've got somebody who wants to speak in support, Fahim Ahmed, and then we've got the applicant, Joseph Bowman. I understand he's got a colleague, Paul Butt, who's accompanying him. And also Water Councillor Liam Challenger has asked to speak. So as with the previous application, we'll take. And in this case, I understand at least the public speaker is in support of this, but he will tell that to us for himself. So if I could ask Fahim Ahmed to come forward, please. Do you want to switch on the mic and we'll just check we can hear you and then tell us.
Hello, yeah.
If you tell us who you are and what you're interested in, and then we'll start timing your five minutes after that.
My name is Fahim Ahmed. I'm a resident of Reading. I'm a frequent member of South Street Mosque. And basically, the building, I'm all for the application for the development because that building is an absolute eyesore, you know, with overgrown bushes. All the windows are boarded up. You see frequent truck users. And it's not very nice when you go on a Friday to pray and the building just definitely needs development. That's it really, yeah.
Has anybody got any questions? Not seeing anybody. So thank you very much for your comments.
That's actually a short and sweet, yeah.
Yes, thank you. And if I could ask the applicant, Joseph Bowman, I understand Paul Butt is with him as well to come forward. Thank you. Shall we check that we can hear you by you telling us?
Hi, does that work? Good. Yeah, so I'm here with Paul Butt, planning consultant on behalf of Hanslink, which is a family-owned development company.
You're going to be speaking, is that right?
Yes.
Right. And so when you're ready, we'll start your five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are all here because we all want to deliver more affordable homes for local people. The opportunity that you have before you today could not be better placed to deliver on exactly that goal. A 100% affordable home scheme on a brownfield site, which has not been in use since 2014, and which is a very short walk away from the town centre and from Reading train station. Some of you will have walked past Trinity Hall. You may know the site well and you may know what it used to be. It has been left unused for almost a decade and has become the source of regular antisocial behaviour, trespassing and internal fire damage. Some of this since Hanslink's recent purchase despite added security measures. As with any planning application, there are of course a number of technical considerations and a number of points raised by the case officer. I would invite you to consider the FAQ sheet that was sent to you via email on Monday afternoon and which responds to each of the technical issues and points raised. Since the application was submitted in March last year, we've been keen to respond to the feedback received from your officer team. And despite the reasons in the report, we wouldn't be asking you to support this application if we did not believe that we have dealt with the technical issues. But for us, the choice this evening is much more fundamental than that. At a time when an affordable place to live is needed more than ever, I would ask you to consider whether we should use this underused site in the central area of Reading or should we instead leave it in the state that it's in? Working with an established housing association who are satisfied with the plans and are ready to deliver the scheme if consented and subject to Homes England funding, all 22 flats will be affordable, including two wheelchair accessible flats on the ground floor. This is exactly in line with other similar schemes which have been consented by this committee, such as at 45 Caversham Road in 2021. But whilst more affordable homes are important, this isn't the only benefit and nor should it be. So tonight, I'd like to give you four other positive reasons to support this application. Firstly, the proposed environmental transformation of the site will deliver a much enhanced street scene compared to what there is now. And also a significant biodiversity net gain of 77% through provision of six swift boxes, six solitary bee blocks and a bat roost unit, tree planting and other landscaping, green walls and potentially green roofs. Second is the cost of living. At a time when all of us are struggling to pay our bills, the submitted energy statement confirms that this application will expect to achieve 67% CO2 savings, which well exceeds the council's minimum requirement of 35%. Thirdly, sustainability. The site is an 11-minute walk away from where we are sat right now. 10-minute walk away from the station and even closer to the town centre. The application will still provide 11 car parking spaces, including two disabled spaces, all of which will include electric vehicle charging as well as 22 cycle stands. And finally, social value. This application will improve the surrounding area with a reduction in antisocial behaviour. In your time as committee members, I'm sure you've heard a number of speeches similar to mine, where promises are made. But I hope that you will see that Trinity Hall is ready to deliver on that promise. And I would encourage you to grasp it with both hands, to embrace the vast improvement that this application presents and to support it this evening. Thank you.
Just see if there are any questions for you. Councillor Emerson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have a number of questions and I actually spoke to the agent earlier today for the sake of transparency. So he knows roughly probably what I'm going to ask. I think it's pertinent to ask for the committee's benefit. So my first question is just a bit more context on the thinking behind the design, because I do feel like I could Google new build flats and what is proposed would come up and I I'm a bit concerned that it's not in keeping with the street scene, albeit you say the street scene is enhanced.
Thank you. I'll do my best to answer and then obviously if Paul wants to chip in, then feel free. What we've tried to pick out with the design is some of the surrounding area, actually, which was the red and blue bricks of the Victorian property on the opposite side of South Street and the parapet brickwork, which was an acknowledgement of the decorative building, decorative detailing of the building. And the ribbed brickwork at the ground floor was a continuation of the ribbed stonework of the Georgian terrace. And the style of the building was actually influenced by a building by the Riverside St James Wharf. So we have tried to bear that in mind. Obviously, I appreciate design is obviously a subjective principle and some people like certain designs and some people don't. But again, when we can talk about design, I'm sure Paul can chip in as well, but fundamentally, we believe that the current design is not suitable. And we think that what we are going to deliver is an improvement, but I look forward to hearing your thoughts as a collective during the debate. Paul, is there anything else to add on design?
Yes, just one thing for councillors on on your report, you have reference to an unimplemented permission for 25 units of student accommodation in 2015. And if you look at that scheme, which at the time was considered to be an improvement, our proposal is a vast improvement on that scheme, which was essentially a modern plock of undistinguished student accommodation. So it is difficult to understand how the great deal of work that will be done to make sure that this building responds sympathetically to its local character has not found favour. Thank you.
You had other questions, councillor Emerson, yeah?
Yeah, no, thank you for your answers on that. My other question is, what is the rationale for 64% one-bed mix on this site, given our policies about the size of bedrooms we aspire to have in the town?
Similar to before, if I kick off and then I'm sure Paul will give a better answer than me. So my understanding is that when we've been speaking to the housing team as part of this application process, they've been satisfied and have made no objection to the mix of one and two beds. But Paul, do you want to add anything else?
Yes, if I may, councillors, your policy CR6 is flexible. It gives the 40% one-bed as a guide. It's not setting stone and quite rightly it's flexible because the requirements change over time. In this case, you have in paragraph 5.5 of the report in front of you, your own housing officer that finds the numbers acceptable and does not say that there is an over provision of one-bed units. That the suggestion that there's no need for one-bed affordable flats in Reading isn't supported by your own housing officer, nor is it supported by the housing association who are ready to deliver on the proposals.
Councillor Emerson.
Thank you, Chair. Noted, but you haven't answered the question. I still am unclear on why the developer is proposing so many one-beds. Appreciate what you say, but you still haven't answered the question, so. I don't know if you wish to, but yeah. Otherwise, the only other question I had was, and I know the answer already, is whether there is an affordable housing provider associated, because it's not in our pack. And when I get chance, I'll ask the officer if we're aware of any affordable housing provider, because that's, I don't know that that's been disclosed to the council and is pertinent in terms of what is proposed to the site.
Councillor Cresswell and then councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the accessible flats. There are 22 flats in the development. 20 of them have balconies and to have significantly less access to the outside. I was wondering what the rationale for choosing two of the one-bed flats and the one-bed flats without balconies for the accessibility is. And given that the footprint of the building takes up the entire plot, how far would a wheelchair-bound person need to travel to access a bit of sunshine in some relaxed setting?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, the two wheelchair-accessible flats, I mean, it's one and two, are on the ground floor. And the nearest public open space is either the town centre itself by the canal or there's Eldon Square, which is about, I think, 500 metres away. Eldon Square is a piece of public open space that's identified on your local planning proposals map as a significant piece of public open space. So it's, to answer your question, it's about 500 metres to Eldon Square, less to the town centre.
Thanks. That was an interesting part of the question. There was another part of the question, which was what the rationale for choosing the accessible flats to be firstly one-beds and secondly, the restricted to the ground floor.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. There's a balance to be had in our view between the parking and the mix of dwellings. There are 11 car parking spaces that are shown. Two of those are intended to be allocated to the two one-bed flats on the ground floor. So to give them the most ease of access to those spaces. Incidentally, all of the 11 parking spaces will be electrically charged. So the rationale for them to be on the ground floor was essentially because they're wheelchair accessible and that they would be able to access their own car parking spaces within the car parking area to the rear most easily.
Councillor Ennis next.
Chair, when I can switch the thing on. And the question is about, it's on page 200, what your answer to the petition of 350 signatories and letters, with, they've got various, you know, issues raised and I think some of it was like, understand bringing back an empty, disused property back into use, but not at any cost. What's your, what's your answer to them? Many of whom are not online, but I'm sure they want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I've been through the 350 signatory petition. I don't know where it's being produced, who it's been produced by, because it's not, that's not the information, not available. But I've been through all of those addresses. And of the 350, a number of them come from Wokingham. A number of them come from Woodley. There's only one address given and the address given is South Street. And that's it. It doesn't give a number or anything. So there's a petition from people who are not local to the site, apart from that one South Street, which doesn't say what number they're at. So I think, you know, my answer to the petition is yes, we understand that there are subjective concerns about any development. The question really is, in the planning balance, whether those concerns are justified or whether the positive benefits weighed in the balance are overriding.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Cresswell kind of took part of, I had two questions, but but noting the situation where we've got the two units, the two accessible units, excuse me, that don't have access to balconies but have access to the 500-metre-away Eldon Square site. And actually cared to tell us, tell us that in your frequently answered, or frequently asked questions, point six, that they could simply access that 500 metres away being disabled. Yeah, that, it just didn't, just didn't, doesn't ring true to me or being very genuine, so I. But that point aside, you talked about the 67% carbon savings that your site's going to bring to the table here. But as councillor Williams alluded to earlier in the prior application, when we take down buildings, there is a carbon loss there that is considerable. So I know this may sound stupid and it may not even be very popular. Why did you not consider what was already there on site? And could that have been reused at all? Because we're in the middle of a climate emergency. And I like to actually kind of understand that from a developer as to why that couldn't have been reused. And why with that deficit now you're sitting down there telling us you've got a positive, when really we all kind of know that there's a lot to make up there when we rip down a building. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Yes, I do appreciate the inherent carbon in existing buildings. But again, it comes down to a balance. The, I don't think there is any dispute in the, in the report that this is a site that is ripe for redevelopment. that this is a site that is ripe for redevelopment. In trying to make sure that the best outcome for energy efficiency arises, retrofitting some quite old building against a new building that can be looked at in terms of not just the physical build, but also in this case in terms of there being air-source heat pumps and fantovataics on the flat roofs, for example. All of those things mean that the balance is, it's better to, in energy efficiency terms, to demolish and rebuild, rather than try to reuse. I've had cases where we've reused a stone from old buildings and things of that nature. So it is possible to do so, but I'm not sure if anyone would want us to reuse the materials that are in this existing building, which has been quite extensively fire damaged as well from the internal inspection.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much for talking to us tonight. I wanted to mention two things really quickly. The affordable housing offer is just in great need in Reading. There's no one here, it doesn't matter what political party you're in, we all recognise a huge need for affordable housing. The conclusion of our offices, though, is that the housing that you're offering is of a poor quality in terms of outlook, daylight and privacy. Is that the kind of affordable housing we need?
Well, I think that's entirely wrong of the officer to say that. All of these flats provide for the national house building sizes. They're all energy efficient. In addition, they all provide balconies, except for the two wheelchair-accessible units on the ground floor, which are set behind the landscape setting that you can see on the proposed ground floor plan. The two ground floor units, units one and two, the wheelchair ones, one of which is dual aspect, so it is on the corner of Sidma Street and South Street. The other one is single aspect. I do appreciate that, unit one. But in the flats that are currently being converted next door, 54 to 56 Queen's Road, there are similar flats that were found to be acceptable. And sometimes the design means that you do end up with a single aspect flat, only one of them. But I would dispute that they're poor quality. These are all to the national house building standards, with balconies, energy efficient, and they have, in addition, some parking as well. So it is difficult to reconcile the comments that have been made of the flats being of poor quality.
Can I just come in just with a slight response as well, which is obviously, I get the point that you're making, and I'm completely empathetic with it, which is, we want affordable housing but not at any cost. Completely get that. All I would say is, obviously there is a registered provider on board, there is a housing association that's ready to deliver the units. And, I mean, it's-
Could you clarify that? Because none of us could find any mention of who that was in the report. It may not be material to the decision, but it would be just interesting to know.
Yeah, so we've been speaking to a range of different registered providers. The one that's sort of on board and ready to deliver is Sovereign Housing Association. And they wouldn't be wanting to take this on if they didn't think that the flats were suitable and acceptable. So that's all I would really say.
councillor Lang?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's actually the same sort of question. I mean, I defend the integrity of the planning process for people to bring applications, you know, through councillors to the committee. But, you know, we need a full application, full details. You saw the depth of the previous application. We need all the information in front of us. So if you're going to talk about affordable, how is it relevant to our Reading affordable rent? Is it, you know, is it national affordability? You know, you can't just slap a label on it of 100% affordable, and then you won't find a bigger advocate of affordable housing than me. Yeah, but it's got to, you've got to put the facts in front of us. You can't bring an 80% application. We've got 11 reasons why the officer has recommended to refuse. We don't go against, or I certainly wouldn't, from a personal level, go against an officer recommendation unless there was a good argument put in front of me. And I'm sorry, this-
councillor Lang, you should be asking questions at this stage.
So the question is, if it's a partnership organisation, as in sovereign housing, why aren't they there with you to argue the viability case of the mix, yeah, which they would if they were the provider? So that's the question. They should be providing viability for the mix if they are the provider.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. We did provide for the update report to the meeting a comprehensive response to the 11 reasons that were given. But for some reason, they're not included in your update report. The only things that are in the update report are the two visualisations that we asked to be presented to you, because we didn't think they would be. So there's a comprehensive report on those 11 reasons. And if I could just say that eight of those reasons were not known to us until last Wednesday.
Yeah, I want to follow up. You still didn't answer the question. Sovereign Housing, your partnership, Housing Association, where is their statement? Where's their supporting statement? Because sovereign have not confirmed that they're your partner.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much. Sovereign Housing were in a teams meeting with the case officer back in January of this year. If the issue is about what the fall of rent is going to be, and what the tenure mix is going to be, then that's something that we can progress with sovereign. But our understanding, which is in your report, is that your officer wouldn't engage with us on that unless we had resolved the issue of the scale of the building. So we would have liked to have produced, the answer to your question is, we would have liked to have produced a section 106 agreement for your consideration tonight, which included all of those matters, but we couldn't get engagement to do so. Thank you.
Right, I've got a number of people now wanting to ask more questions. I think councillor Cresswell, you were next, and then councillor Yo, and then councillor Ennis. Oh, sorry, sometimes can't see you through councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about biodiversity and the 77% increase figure. The site, as it stands at the moment, clearly can be improved. However, as I walked past this afternoon, there was quite a lot of biodiversity blooming outside of it. My question is, how does that 77% relate to the kind of benefits that could be achieved if there was open land left on the site with sunlight access in an alternative scheme? So the sections of green wall are quite nice. If my reading of the section drawings is correct, one of the green walls is inside the car park underneath the building. And I'm not convinced that anything but mushrooms and a few ferns are going to grow in there. So can you clarify, please?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, the ecology assessment predicts a 77% net biodiversity gain. On the site at present, it's been unoccupied for the best part of a decade. And it's quite wild, if I can put it that way. There are no trees on the site at present, and the proposal includes eight trees to be planted in the landscape strips along Sidma Street and South Street. It also proposes those two green walls. One of the green walls is onto Sidma Street, and the other green wall is onto Livery Close. So they're both onto public space, if I could put it that way. In addition, there's the potential for green roofs as well, particularly on the flat top roof of units 21 and 22. We have to take into account that there are fantovataics that are meant to be going on the top of the roof as well. But there is the potential of a green roof on top of there as well. So overall, there is a gain of 77%. Compared to, you know, what's coming in the Environment Act, which is 10%, is quite significant. Hope that answers your questions.
Right, and I've got councillor Yo, then councillor Ennis, and then councillor Horsby Smith.
Hi. I just wanted to make a sort of a correction, really, because while we've been asking these questions, I went back to the petition, because when I first saw this application as vice chair of the committee, I wanted to understand why it was coming to the committee when we were sort of being asked to refuse it. When you look at the first page and a couple of other pages, yes, there are people from Wokingham and Woodley. But this is a petition from all over Reading. And I think that's because it's on South Street, which is one of the streets in Reading that people will know as a place that you go to. So that's why there are people objecting to it from all over, from east, west and north Reading, but also from roads that aren't very far away from here. So I think, I just want to correct that, because, you know, you made it sound like there were people that weren't bothered by this in the local area. So, you know.
Very briefly, I do understand the point that you make. Petitions, in my experience, and in planning generally, attach less weight than individual lessons of objection. So I appreciate in this case, there are three individual lessons of objection, one of which is, two of which are from the same person. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
The question is, do you understand, as somebody, like I'm a Reading fan, right? And it's a lot of false dawns, and there's not a lot of promises, a lot of name dropping. It don't show. If anyone's out there, we need a manager. Can you understand that sovereign housing, it's a great name, and it could really be potentially good, but it's like a bit of a name drop. And that's why I'm struggling to put it into my psyche to think this could be a goer. Because it's got potential. Do you understand? Would you understand why we're struggling with that, that they're not really in the plans, but could be? A bit like Chris Wilder, he was there, but he's not.
If I can, I'm a Brentford fan. And, yes, Sovereign Housing Association were a party to the teams meeting we had with the case officer back in January. And, you know, we have been trying to get that draft legal agreement progressed, but to no avail, I'm afraid.
Can I just say, they have pulled out of other developments when they actually have been at the party, involved and signed, and they have pulled out, just as a matter of fact, fact check. So that's why it's cynicism.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. In our policy documents, our local plan, we have clear policies about the housing mix in terms of social renting or shared ownership. I can't find anywhere in the report what is the proposed housing mix there. And what I understood from your previous response was that the officer hadn't asked those questions, yet it does appear in our local plan. So I wondered if you could confirm what your intention is in respect of the way that you are intending to operate with sovereign. The second thing is about bulk and height. I wondered whether you had at any point considered a lower-key development in respect of South Street, especially in the facades that are along there, in response to the officer's initial discussions with you. I must admit that when I first saw these plans, I thought, why on earth are you going for five stories and such a big building on such a small site, when something low-key could have been so much more in keeping? Now, you've argued that Queen Street is, there are similar developments on Queen Street, and yet this is not Queen Street, this is further back. And the interaction is with South Street. So I wondered if you could comment on your process of wanting to go for something that's so much higher, so much bigger than the surrounding grounds, and also that housing mix. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. We had a topographical survey undertaken of the site. There's a slight slope from down to Queen's Road. And we also had the topographical survey extended along South Street as well. There are a number of four- and five-storey buildings in South Street, many commercial buildings as well. And also, the immediately adjoining one at 54 to 58 Queen's Road is a four-storey commercial development that has a plan of vision that's currently being constructed for flats in the roof. So it's not the case that we were looking at a surrounding area that was a lot lower than what we're being proposed. It's pretty comparable to it. On the corner, and generally on corners, if you go to Poundbury, for example, generally on the corners, you have taller buildings to make the streets more legible. So it's not unusual to have taller buildings on the corners. But in this case, it isn't. It is comparable to South Street, and it is comparable to the immediate neighbours in 54 to 58 Queen's Road. There is a scheme not far from the site, at East Road, I think it is, on the corner of South Street and East Road, which was a Barclay Homes development. And that is a similar scale with the top floor set back. So it's not unusual to see this sort of development in South Street. Sorry, I forgot your second question. The housing mix.
The housing mix, and it's the tenure, it's social renting versus shared ownership. What are your arrangements with sovereign about that?
Yeah, I mean, the housing mix is what sovereign want. We did provide, in the amended plans, a three-bedroom unit on the top floor, that's unit 22, rather than the two beds. So we changed it to a three bed, at the request of the officer, even though sovereign don't really want it. So we are in the situation where we do have a housing association on board. But they're on board because the scale of this scheme, the 22 units, is quite low for them, and that it's only a viable scheme for the 22 units. 21 units, they may very well walk away, as the other councillor suggested, that sometimes takes place. So, you know, it is an opportunity that I think ought to be given a significant weight in the provision of these affordable homes. Whether or not, sorry, the precise rent and the tenure and the like, really, we're quite happy to have discussions between sovereign and the housing officer about what that might be. I think you have to recognise that this isn't a big 600-unit scheme. This is a small-scale scheme, and there are constraints on what you can provide in terms of the mix of housing types.
One final one then, councillor Horsby Smith, and then I think we should be all right now. One final one then, councillor Hornsby Smith, and then I think we should be all right now. Sorry, we've had a lot of questions to respond to and thank you for that. But thank, and thank you for coming. But I'm now going to move on to councillor Challenger, who is here to speak as ward councillor. And then I'll ask officers after that if they've got any responses to anything that's been said, so that then we can move on to the debate. Councillor Challenger.
Thank you, Chair. And don't worry, I'm going to speak slightly more than the first speaker, but slightly less than the second speaker. Thank you so much for the chance to talk tonight and add my thoughts and some narrative to, you know, this application. Trinity Hall has a soft spot in my heart. It was my first piece of casework when I was elected, trying to fix the antisocial behaviour and the fly tipping that was on the site. So as it has been made, you know, numerous times, it has been an abandoned site for nine years, coming up to 10. Cates Grove is a thoroughfare. South Street is a destination from the Arts Centre that is a performance venue to a church at the weekends as well. We've all driven, walked or cycled down South Street at some point during our time. It is a hodgepodge of a street. There is numerous different build designs, there are numerous different ideas and views about what is a pretty building. I think we can all agree that an abandoned site isn't one of them. And so to see some progress and to see an application that has potential is something that is really key for me. I don't know if, you know, once upon a time, Cates Grove had claim to the most pubs in Reading. It probably runs it now for the most abandoned sites in Reading. I think of the corner of Pell Street with the old antique shop, the fish and chip shop on Crown Street, the old Chinese restaurant at the corner of Bazinstock and Home Farm Close. The numerous sites that are on Silver Street. Finally, we're seeing progress on the Woodley Arms site and the Central Club, you know, are some of the ones that can just come to mind. To see an application on a brownfield site with 100% affordable homes, it's not perfect, it needs work, but it does have something that is missing on the development and in here. When speaking to residents around the area, they want to see, you know, change, they want to see progress and they want to see the area tidied up, a development on that site of something that isn't huge compared to what is in the local area. You know, if we look at the corner of East Street and Queen's Road, there's the student accommodation building that's built on there that is bigger than this and in the conservation era, and also backs on to two listed buildings at risk and the old Great Expectations pub. Also on the corner of South Street and E Street, there are very big dominating modern blocks as well that are in spitting distance of this. Some of you are aware that recently Riverside have closed their operation in Cates Grove, which came to a shock. That was 60 affordable and assisted living accommodation. And it feels like we need to have something else to replace it and this could possibly be. Policy is a driving force and guidelines exist, but as like we've heard before, discretion is there to take place. And I'd like the committee to think about deferring it as we could look at some more possible information. Or something that was touched upon earlier, section 106 money, you know, with this, it could help with a crossing at Sidema Street. It could help develop and improve the local area as well with that trickle down. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And as I said earlier on, councillor Mitchel spoke, we don't get to question you. So thank you and we'll move on to the discussion. But first of all, just ask officers, is there anything from everything you've heard that you wanted to clarify or add to?
Thank you, Chair. Not too much, I think the report is hopefully quite clear in its, its conclusions. I think just in terms of, just as, just a word of caution in terms of the existing condition of the building. And I think it's also important to remember that, you know, an owner has a responsibility to maintain their, their building. And the existing building, yes, there may be some dilapidation. But you have to just be, I think, just be careful in terms of the weight, the weight you might give that in your deliberations. But other than that, I think we're happy to rely on the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Right, comments or councillor Emberson?
Yeah, can officers please comment just in terms of the lack of legal agreement, which is a free point? There's free reason for refusal on the basis there's no legal agreement. And we've heard from the applicant tonight that discussions were had about what affordable housing was offer, on offer. But the report suggests that no such agreement has been met. So it'd just be helpful to understand a bit of the context there, given it's not in the report. But I do agree, it's a comprehensive report, it'd just be helpful to get clarification on that.
Yep, through you, Chair, thank you. Yes, I mean, it would normally be the case, I think with these kind of discussions, it's, it's, they would normally, once a scheme is progressing, we tend to try and avoid sort of abortive work on, on legal agreements, particularly into the finer detail of the agreement itself. Yes, so normally whilst it does form a reason for refusal, if you had an otherwise unacceptable scheme, then those reasons would fall away because we would normally then progress the legal agreement, get it completed and then the, the permission would be issued. So whilst the, the reasons may seem a little harsh in the sense that discussions may have been ongoing, until you have it signed and sealed, actually those, those reasons would have to stay.
Thank you, councillor Lang.
Yep, thank you, Chair. I'll be quick. I mean, I was probably a little bit harsh. And my harshness was because I wanted it to succeed. You know, I can, I can see potential i- in the application. You know, that's what was so frustrating about it. The amenity space of the two ground floor flats, you know, just the, the proposed elevation on to South Street. It's like it's sort of like half baked. So, and I totally agree with the, with the officers, it, it's short, it falls short for me. It doesn't mean that it hasn't got potential. And of course, 100% affordable, brilliant, but let's get the housing association on board. As councillor Ennis said, you know, we've just had one recently drop out, I think it was in Southcote at very last minute. You know, so these, these things, these things are very relevant to councillors when they're dealing with houses associations. And so anyway, thank you, Chair.
Anybody else? Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, I guess I'm taking up a bit of our time, but I agree completely with councillor Lang. But the people, the families, the residents need affordable homes. Oh no, hang on. I'll try and get a photo of that face next time. People need affordable homes, that's not in question. But we can't consign them to substandard homes. Affordable homes should be as safe, as secure, as warm and as good as any other homes. They shouldn't be what we're seeing here, which isn't good enough. We should be proud of our affordable housing in Reading. And this isn't quite that. I'm happy to agree, it's a good location. And with the right application, which I hope the developer, developer comes back with, with 100% affordable, the right application in that location, I think would get a lot of support. But the, the, the future of Reading can't be substandard. It should be the best we can get. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Emberson?
I fully agree with what councillors have already said and with councillor Williams. I think for me, what really concerns me is that first picture in the update pack. I mean, the second one, sure, I can see it from Sidema Street, you know, you know, it's not 100% in keeping with the area in terms of the design. However, you know, you can, you can see it. But in that first photo, right next to what has heritage value, I just, I think what councillor Lang has said that it's half baked is absolutely spot on. Because, you know, these windows are right next to the windows of existing buildings. I appreciate their CGI photos, et cetera. But the officer was very clear in terms of the design and it being inappropriate. And I think that image just sums it up. Because, you know, for people that would be living here, it would be substandard. And I don't think that is acceptable. And, you know, the committee has to take a view on, you know, balancing. And I think on this occasion, I concur with colleagues that this should be rejected in keeping with the officer recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Rowland.
Chair, yes, just really quickly, leading on from what councillor Emberson said, I entirely agree with that. And I think that the, the recommendation for refusal and, and also what councillor Hornsby Smith was alluding to about the excessive scale and the, the dominance, well designed and, and stepped up and stepped down appropriately is, I think, the, I think something we would really, really look for. Every other comment from every other councillor on that, on that point, I would certainly agree with. But you've got to think about really responding to those heritage buildings around there too. So, thank you.
Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to just for a moment empathise very much with the residents who took the time to come and who see this site unused and potentially attracting antisocial behaviour and fly tipping, et cetera. And the sentiment expressed by councillor Challenger as well in that, in response to frustration that, you know, there's at last something, something coming forward on a, on a, something that they see as a blight and they have to look at every, every Friday and other people every day. But, so I totally, and we all, it seems that we're united in empathising that this is a site that needs development. But that is, cannot be seen as an opportunity for a developer to just get a development through because it's better than what's there now. It has to be good enough for the people of Reading that we all represent for the next 40, 50 plus years or whatever. So we all support the need to, to, to get, you know, get these derelict sites or, sorry, unused, underused sites into use and, and get the good developments on them. And I think that's, that's what I'm, what I'm hearing is that everyone wants that. It's frustrating that this doesn't seem to be it. And we would be hopeful that something better will come forward soon.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. This is an interesting application in many ways. As councillor Challenger has said, the, there is a large different mix of properties along South Street from modernish to obviously the, the properties next to this proposed site. My feelings are that, you know, I, I would be minded to actually go against the officer's recommendation on this. You know, the, the, the actual site has remained unused for over nine years, almost 10 years. It is, you know, it's a site that is doing nothing right now. It needs to be redeveloped. You know, I'm, I'm of the opinion of, of going against the, the recommendation. You know, the very fact that back in 2015, this council approved 25 student units on this site. It was never built, but this is only 22 units. There has been a lot of talk about quality of the accommodation as well. And I'd like to know where the understanding that it's going to be poor quality comes from. You know, my, my thoughts are that I will be voting in favour unless we get a deferral for, you know, the reasons of potentially looking back at the design and then coming back to council at a later stage. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gavin.
Thank you, Chair. I, I hadn't intended to speak on this item, but I can't let slip some of the things which have been said. Firstly, on the RBC housing, repeatedly, the developers said the, that the RBC housing supported their proposal. However, if you look on page 200 of your pack on 5.5, it makes very clear, it says, there is a need to ensure appropriate number of two bedroom units. So RBC housing have said that that's what we need. We need two bedroom housing units, not one bedroom. But I think that, that I agree with councillor Davis that this site needs to be developed. We need to find the right developer to develop it. Affordable housing, of course, gets the thumbs up every time. However, when you go through this report, there are 11, not just 11 reasons why. If you look through the reasons, there are actually 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, I won't exaggerate. There are 10 different policies which are outlined by the officer, which this application does not apply to. Now, one might ask ourselves, and I think we need to ask ourselves, and perhaps councillor Robinson needs to ask himself, why do we have planning policy which is considered, debated with the best interests of Reading at heart? Why do we have those policies if we ignore them? So it seems to me that just on the volume of policies and sometimes applications maybe don't quite comply with policy one or policy two or policy three. But the volume of policies here, which are not, which it does not comply to, says to me that this is an unsuitable application for this site at this time. We really hope that an application comes forward for this type of development on this site, which is policy compliant. And we, I think, from the mood of this, of, of members, I think we could all agree that we would support such an application. But sadly, very sadly, this is not it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Well, I'm not seeing anybody else and we've had a fairly full debate, not to mention a very full questioning session of the applicant. And I'd like to see all those who are in favour of refusing this application, which is the officer recommendation. Thank you. And then those against? So it's just. Right, thank you for that. And it was a, yeah, I, I just, it's really a shame that we aren't able to see something happening on that site. But there's no reason to approve a bad application, just because something needs to be sorted out. We need to get it right. Okay, can we move on to the final report, which is on page 219, which is an application by Reading Borough Council to improve various properties on the old Norcott Estate? And I think Steve, you're introducing this. Oh yes, councillor Rowlands has another appointment she needed to go to, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. It's item nine. Yes, it's item nine, apologies. Yes, so the, the site relates to 22 dwellings situated on Rockbourne Gardens, Cranball Gardens and Ripley Road on the Norcott Estate. The applicant is Reading Borough Council and this is therefore a Regulation 3 application. The application proposes improvements and thermal efficiency works to the dwellings involved in the application, including external wall installation, new glazing, minor roof adaptations, alongside the installation of air source heat pumps and central heating upgrades. The works are a third phase of improvement works by the council, taking place across the Norcott Estate to meet the council's wider net zero goals. Details of the planning applications related to the previous two phases are outlined in the committee report in section three. Development will contribute, in the officer's opinion, to the sustainable refurbishment of existing building stock and to adapting the development to meet the challenges of climate change. The officers consider the, the general principle of development acceptable on that basis. The overall visual impact of the development is considered to be relatively minor and unobtrusive within the street scene. Potential noise impacts from the air source heat pumps have been assessed and are considered acceptable by officers and do not consider the development to be harmful to meaningful neighbours within the wider area. Therefore, the officer recommendation is for approval and it's subject to conditions and informative set out on page 219 of the main agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Briefly, I'm thoroughly supportive, I'm sure we all are. I'm very supportive of air source heat pumps and I just wonder if I can get a bit of clarification because I don't think that the application was required for air source heat pumps. They're covered by permitted development. That's what I thought. And whilst, I'm, I'm sure we're all going to applaud their installation, what I don't want to do is, is put a potential barrier in the way of residents thinking, oh, I've got to apply for planning application if I get one of those. I don't think they do, I think they're covered by PD. And, but this was an application for air source heat pumps. So I wonder if the officer could just clarify, is, is perhaps, do you need, do you need an application if they go over a certain size? Or I'm getting nods. If an officer could clarify, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. Yeah, just, just slightly off the top of my head. But there will be situations whereby, so yeah, permitted development rights do exist for dwellings to provide air source heat pumps, subject to a range of criteria. I think off the top of my head, including the distance. I think off the top of my head, including the distance, the boundary, the size of the air pump or its power output. And clearly, if a building's a listed building or anything like that, there's added sort of legislation involving that. So it's not, well, probably it's not one size fits all. But yes, there is a, you know, the government has permitted development rights for air source heat pumps in a wide range of settings. So yes, yeah, a lot of householders could well do it under PD, but they'd need to check.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And these could have been done under PD, but presumably the councillors, the applicant was just being sort of belt and braces. Is that right?
Councillor Ennis, you're next.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak, but since given all about the discussion about affordable housing and net zero, you know, you can't let this sort of application go without comment. With Reading's best landlord, Reading's best landlord is showing the way, leading the way with net zero and making sure that tenants, tenants are tenants, I'm proud of our tenants. As an ex-council tenant myself, I don't think I've ever mentioned that. You know, they will be fortunate living in there that they will get net zero. And it's a brilliant application to be welcomed. It's just the beginning. We always have discussions with the Greens, which is fair enough. We look at our own stock. We can show best value, best practice with new council houses, the best in the country. And we're making sure our own stock is fit for purpose for the future to get to net zero. The question always comes, you know, I'd like people to welcome this, is that the private stock? That's a bigger challenge. And we need governmental support. We need government support in our private stock, which many of whom are far away in a worse condition than our own stock, council stock from, I'll say it again, the best landlord in Reading. It's just the beginning for us. And we got to show the way, we got to prove that we mean business and this is one way of doing it, whilst appealing to government for support to ensure that this type of measures, these type of measures are able to be brought forward into the private sector. So very much welcome this report and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lang.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Councillor Ennis said he wanted to say a few words. So I will be brief with my one. I tweeted out the other day because a lot of, it's investing in our council stock, you know. And my ward in particular has got, I think, the most amount of council stock of any of the wards. This is in Kentwood, you know, it's the councillor keeping. Councillor Glenn, sorry, and councillor Singh, I'm sure will support it as well. And I did tweet out, simple, because Blanford Road, we're getting new windows fitted and all the rest of it. And I was really, really pleased, using local contractors as well, you know, which I think is important. The developer mentioned, I think, social benefit and stuff like that. So anyway, all I said was energy efficient homes mean warmer homes whilst helping to lower energy bills for residents. And that's it. Simple. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm sure we all welcome this. Can I see all those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous and thank you all very much.